Workshop this evening, which will be dealing with the recent, recently completed police staffing study. We have about 45 minutes. There'll be a council meeting starting at six. So without further ado, I will turn this over to Chief Dean Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to have this study done of the department. This is the first time that a study like this has been done here in Oshkosh for the police department, and it's kind of monumental, and I appreciate the support that was provided by each of you to allow that to happen. To my right is our consultant.
Richard Brady.
Thank you. Just froze up. Richard Brady?
It's the letter.
Richard's the president of Matrix Consulting Group. He's been working very diligently with myself and the staff over the last, oh gosh, probably six months, collecting data, doing analysis of the information, and putting together the completed study. So with that, I turn it over to Richard, and Richard, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to come here to present the results of our staffing study. It was a long effort for us. We began in May of last year and worked very closely with the department throughout the summer and in the fall and early winter. We've been working on finalizing the report. I understand you've got the executive summary, and eventually, or soon, or imminently, you'll get the full report, and I thought it would take a few minutes to summarize in the interest of time. I'll be kind of high level like the executive summary, and I don't mind you interrupting me with questions as I go along. We don't have to leave until the end as well. So let me start out with what we were asked to do in this study. It was first and foremost a staffing study, but looking at what the current needs are for staffing based on workloads and service levels to the community, but also projecting staffing needs in the department for the next five years and beyond. But a staffing study is more than just looking at metrics like calls for service or investigative cases. How operations are managed are an important part of a staffing study, and so there are many recommendations in here that relate to how patrol services, investigative services, and administrative services are managed, because it has an impact not only on staffing needs, but the efficiency and effectiveness of services provided. So that's an essential part of this study, and we looked at those kinds of issues as well. How we conducted the study, again, we began in May, last May, and started a process of heavily interviewing within the department as a primary way of getting information about how services are provided, roles and responsibilities of staff, interrelationships among functions, et cetera. Outside of patrol, we talked at least briefly to almost every staff person within the department. In patrol, we did a few ride-alongs and talked to first-line supervisors. So the input we received wasn't just from the chief and his top management staff or even first-line supervisors. We went very deeply into the organization, and it gave us a good appreciation for operations as well as issues. But once you take a look at the report, you'll see the data was an important part of it as well. There are almost as many numbers as words in the report. So it's a fact-based report that looks at workloads, internal and external service levels, and things relating to staff utilization and operations management. Because we needed to look forward in this study, we worked with city planning to understand development trends, recent trends, as well as projections in the future for residential population, as well as commercial development, downtown development, and redevelopment throughout the city. So we incorporated that as well, and as a result, this study provides you a snapshot of what current needs are, current staffing needs are within the department, but also a model or a way to look at the impacts of future growth on the community and what that means in terms of departmental staffing. Because while we have made a projection, I guarantee that in five or 10 years, things will be different. So rather than calling a consultant, again, it's good to have the tools that you need within the department and for you and the city manager's office to be able to look at the changing needs of the community and build the department around that. Throughout this process, as we went from facts in the summer to issues in late summer and fall, and developing the analysis that led to the final report, we collaborated with departmental staff. So by the time they saw the final report, there were no surprises, and we quality-controlled facts and had some mutual recognition that what we identified as staffing and operational issues were agreed to, to some extent by them, and that the alternatives that we looked at, including staffing and management, operational kinds of changes, had some grounds of acceptance. And so again, as I said, there were no surprises when we came up with the final report. So let's start out with patrol, the largest portion of the department, and the largest portion of this report as well. Just some factual information. First of all, the police department responds to 24,000 community-generated calls for service, either through 911, or a direct phone call, or an alarm, or a flag down. Those are community requests for service. That's about 65 a day, or two or three an hour. They fall in a pattern that is relatively normal for public safety workloads, police included, where calls for service peak from about 3:00 into the early evening hours, and then trail off rather rapidly to, from after midnight to about 6:00 in the morning when people start waking up again and needing help or causing problems. And so this is, that graph shows that trend in calls for service. It's important to recognize that police officers, patrol officers, aren't just responding to requests for service. They also generate their own activities. They've got time that is available, which we'll get into in more detail in a minute, proactive time that allows them to work with the community, to anticipate problems that occur, deploy themselves in such a way, and that puts them in a position to generate their own activity. And those levels of activity are quite high in Oshkosh, at 50% of the number of community-generated workload. That shows that police officers are actively involved and engaged with the community in a wide variety of ways, and not all proactivity, proactive activities are even counted. So this is a low estimate of what it is. It's just the things that are recorded within the computer-aided dispatch system that we're able to get information on. This shows a little bit more about the calls for service that occur. It shows that, to the 10 most serious, excuse me, the 10 most common incidents within, recorded within the computer-aided dispatch system and records management system, that were recorded. Most of them are not crimes. Half of them aren't crimes at all. About half of them could be crimes, or just suspicious circumstances, or requests for some kind of assist. So that says a lot about the nature of the law enforcement workload here. Fewer serious crimes in Oshkosh than in many of our clients. The dark blue lines that you see show when most of those incidents occur. So as with the peak in general calls for service, these more frequent things tend to occur from about noon into the early evening hours. The chart shows, the HT shows, the handling time associated with each one of the calls. We use that to develop the staffing metrics that we utilize for the study, but we also looked at response times, and response times in Oshkosh are quite good. For more serious calls for service, as well as less serious calls for service, they're generally averaging under 10 minutes. And that's an important indicator for us, because it says something about the seriousness of the crime environment, but also staffing, because they're available to respond to calls. Many of our clients are having to break off from lower priority calls to handle higher priority calls, which impacts response times, and you're not in that situation, and that's a good sign. This is one of the most important parts of the analysis about patrol that we did in this study. It portrays the amount of proactive time, the percent of the total of proactive time that patrol officers have by day of week, and by four-hour blocks of time throughout the day. And just some background on this, I mean, if police officers spend, spent most of their time just handling calls for service, they would, that's one aspect of community service, but they would be spending all of their time responding to things that happened five or 10 minutes ago, and it would be no indicator of their efforts to work with the community, to solve problems, anticipate problems, et cetera. So the use of proactive time, the availability of proactive time, is the single most important indicator, we believe, of patrol effectiveness. And police departments in general look at this indicator, and there are some benchmark or best practice standards out there. Between 35% and 45% of an officer's time to be proactive is an effective target, and you're at the top of that range on a 24/7 basis at 46%. Now, that includes many hours, like after midnight, before 6:00 in the morning, where there's a lot of proactive time available, but not much you can use it for, because people tend to be asleep. But even within the high activity hours, from say 10:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, officers generally have at least a third of their time, often much more, to be involved with the community and to work with them on problem solving. And there are very few hours a day that fall below 33%. As I noted earlier, patrol officers are effectively using their proactive time, and we looked at when that occurred too, and that even during peak call times, like in the late afternoon and early evening, they're generating a lot of officer-initiated activities. So these are important indicators for patrol. One of the things that we found that as we went through this is that there's an issue about how calls are prioritized, even in spite of the fact that most calls are not higher priority calls. They reserve the highest priority call, priority one, essentially for one type of call, one of the most serious calls that can occur, when an officer's down for some reason. And there was only one of those in the 2017 call period that we looked at, and we're not even sure that included officer down. It was for a break-in of some kind. So a large number of calls are in the second priority, at 27%, and if that's your highest priority of call, at 27%, many calls are over-prioritized. In most of the work that we do, the highest priority calls with your in-progress kinds of felonies, life-threatening types of things, serious traffic accidents, things like that, are generally 5% or less. So you should work with dispatch to better prioritize calls, because that gives you a better understanding of patrol needs and the use of their time, and also allows for better prioritization of calls and anticipating what kind of resources should be dispatched. Right now, with the call patterns you've got, and I think you can see that leading up to this, the discussion I've had up to this point, that staffing needs closely match authorized staffing. We did believe that another position was needed. Remember, we started this in May of last year, using data from 2017, so you're already adding that position. You authorized it last year, and you need that because there's been higher-than-expected turnover recently, and you need that to provide the coverage for the city that you've targeted. There is a need for another sergeant position that you haven't authorized, to provide better relief during the day shift, but also to assist with the supervision and oversight of other resources. Things that we're recommending, and at last dot point there, where community service officers, the CSOs, and the crossing guards should be brought to patrol, but also to assist with the incredible number of special events that Oshkosh hosts each year. I mean, practically one a day, it seems. And so it's an awful lot of work for one primary sergeant to be able to do that in special operations. So that position needs some help, and another relief sergeant could assist with that. Moving on to investigations, caseloads are appropriate for the number of detectives, and we have some caseload standards that we use that recognize that detectives need to work the cases that are assigned to them, cases that have some solvability potential, and have other things that they do. They have collateral responsibilities here, other responsibilities besides just handling cases, and their caseloads are appropriate for the staffing they have. There are some case management issues that need to be addressed that are probably going to be best left for when the new records management system is implemented. Right now, cases are really managed, at least in some formal way, on an Excel spreadsheet, and the records management system will allow you, allow the sergeant and lieutenant to see how actively cases are worked, when was the last time they were worked, and could provide a trigger to additional kinds of oversight and working with the detectives. So we've made some recommendations there. An emerging area in this country that needs staffing attention is all the digital evidence that exists. When you think about it, all the things that you see on television about videos, body-worn cameras, cellphone evidence, all this stuff needs to be worked. 10 years ago, this stuff didn't exist. That needs to be dealt with. It's an important, important pieces of evidence that detectives need to use to manage cases, and right now, they're doing it, which takes them away from their cases. The property clerks are doing it for patrol evidence from digital workloads. And so more departments, including smaller departments, are adding civilian or non-sworn digital evidence technicians to assist with going through that data, and it's something that you're going to need to address in the next few years, because the impacts on detectives and other people are such that their effectiveness is going to diminish, because this evidence is only going to be growing. Property and evidence, who's dealing with some of this? This function is currently organized under criminal investigations. There are some strong reasons to reassign it to administrative services, one being it's more of an administrative function that crosscuts the department and not just detectives, but also they're being supervised by a manager who is largely involved in that area, and so there's, Kalia recommends that it not be, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement recommends that it be separate from patrol and investigations, and that's become a best practice now because of that. Administration, lastly, and it's last, but I don't want to diminish it. I mean, not just Oshkosh, but departments across the country had an issue after the Great Recession where you needed to right-size departments and be consistent with what revenue generation was, and it was hard to reduce sworn positions, and often it was easier to reduce non-sworn positions, and that happened here. But even when it didn't happen, it's been easier to add non-sworn positions, police officers, than it has been to add non-sworn positions. The result of that is that as workloads have grown over the last 10 years, and as workloads have changed, including some of the things that I've mentioned here, there have been huge impacts on non-sworn positions in functions like Administrative Services Bureau, bureaus. Nowhere more is this felt in Oshkosh, Oshkosh's police department, than with the office manager, who has something like 13 direct reports of full-time and part-time positions, plus is responsible for budget, payroll, some information technology, grants, and a wide variety of other kinds of things. So we've recommended the creation of a record supervisor position. I think apart from the direct service positions in patrol, and the police officer and sergeant recommendations that we've made, this is the most important recommendation we've made, to someone who would be a working supervisor, working primarily in the records area to alleviate the office manager, that day-to-day, hour-to-hour responsibility, so that she could be more involved with the budget, financial management, human resource types of things, as well as grants and information technology roles that she is responsible for. There's some other recommendations in here. Right now, you've got telecommunicators, which are front desk people who do a wide variety of things. They answer the phone, actually take some reports, do some other things, and they're 24/7. It's been hard to keep positions filled. It's been hard to get people to work 24 hours a day, and there's no need for 24 hours a day, because the records and walk-in traffic falls to close to nothing after midnight and is really close to nothing after about 2:00 in the morning. So we've recommended that you reduce the number of hours of coverage to something like 20 hours a day, and that person, other new records supervisor position, would have responsibility for them as well. We've got some minor recommendations about staffing for records, but many of these should be reevaluated, reevaluated, once you implement the new records management system in the next couple of years, because the nature of their workload will change quite a bit, less from direct report entry into quality control kind of roles, and that really affects the number and the type of position that you have. The Work Study Program, provided by the University of Wisconsin at Oshkosh, has been valuable. You should continue that. The last one is an organizational recommendation. Oshkosh is kind of an odd size for departments. I mean, you're a relatively small department, but you've got all the needs of a larger department, and because reporting to states, reporting to you, reporting to the community and working with the community, as well as operations oversight, creates a lot of demands on the staff. And you've got a relatively lean operation, couple of captains and one assistant chief, so you're at this odd size of whether another management position is warranted. We don't think it should. I think that you should look first at redistributing roles and responsibilities among a wider group of management and even first-line supervisory staff, to give sergeants and lieutenants more duties to help prepare them for promotion, as well as to alleviate the impacts on the operations bureau captain over patrol and a wide variety of other things, which is a lot of the department. So I think that for the planning period that we envision here, that should be sufficient. So as indicated, we also made some projections for the department. So the first thing we did was look at projected population changes, as well as commercial and redevelopment. The city is projected to grow only about 10%. That's fairly modest growth over the next, what's that, 21 years? In our primary projection period, the next five years, only about 5% or 6% population growth. So not a lot of difference, but population, resident population isn't everything. Downtown growth, commercial growth, the mall and elsewhere, redevelopment brings people into the city that aren't residents, but I think what we're seeing here is that population will only grow about 1% a year, something like that, but non-population-oriented growth could be that much or greater. So we've developed a workload growth over the next few years that is about 5% or about 1% a year, so that won't radically change the service environment in the city, assuming that nothing changes. So we've looked at call-for-service projection increases, as well as Part 1 crime, and used that as some of the major drivers for certainly patrol and investigation staffing increases, and with, along with that, the impacts on other functions in the department, administrative functions, or other kinds of service functions and the like. Yeah?
I'm just curious. So did planning provide you with the planning areas?
Mm-hmm.
And so there was nothing for west?
Oh, we included that in one other area. I'm not sure exactly where that-
I believe it was the south, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the south, yes. So these are the staffing recommendations. We only took the staffing recommendations for purposes of here for the next five years. So we've already mentioned the police officer position. It's actually one police officer, one sergeant. You're in the position of adding a police officer now. The sergeant is a short-term recommendation as well. We think the record supervisor should be added in the short term, and the digital evidence technician as well. I think if you were to ask me to prioritize those two, again, I think the record supervisor is a higher priority. But over the next three or four years, based on the growth, another two police officers will be added. But it's important not to continue to look at this report over the next few years and say that Matrix said this, that, or the other thing. You need to monitor call-for-service growth, crime growth, et cetera, and there'll be other changes that will happen, just as digital evidence has changed over the last five to 10 years, that will present new challenges to the department. So you need to ask these questions every year. But for the base type of analysis related to calls for service for patrol and crime for investigations, you have the tools and some detailed projections in the report to do that analysis yourselves. So that is our project in a nutshell. I'd like to take any questions that you've got.
I guess my question would be more for the chief. Chief Smith, with this report, where do you anticipate you go next with the report? I mean, are you gonna look at it, start thinking about budgetary issues if you're gonna ask for positions? It looks like it's only one sworn position. The rest would be civilian positions, or are you thinking that some of those positions would still need to be law enforcement?
Well, you have in the report, the looking at patrol officer position sworn, sergeant position, which is sworn as well. So there's two sworn positions-
Positions, right.
And then you have two more civilian positions that are immediate needs, near-term. There are functional items within the report that we've already done that are more organizational, probably. There are a lot of action items that we can do that have no cost whatsoever, and as you probably recall, council had reserved a portion of monies in 2019's operating budget for discussion after-
Right.
-after this report was presented, which provides some opportunity for you as a council to make some decisions on what you're looking to provide back to the department as relates to the positions. There are some, as I mentioned, some areas that we were able to make some adjustments, and within the report, there's subtle nudges that we can do along the way to help us be more efficient at what we do. And everything that Richard has talked to you about, they all kind of work together, and if you take a one-off, then I have to evaluate whether or not that one-off is gonna affect some other area of the report, because it's a big spider web that works together.
Sure. On the, if we did go down to 20 hours versus 24 hour for telecommunicators, will you anticipate 911 center handling those non-emergency calls after 3, 4 in the morning?
Yeah, we'll install a ring-down phone in the lobby area there. We actually, we did a study of the calls, or the type of traffic that we have coming in, and it's like one or two over a four-hour period.
Right.
Really is very negligible, the amount of folks that come in. I've spoken with the sheriff and advised him that this is a direction that we're headed. It really is a small amount of calls, and I think it draws some efficiency, that we'll be able to provide some relief to some of our civilian staff that's working second shift. They really can't take breaks, because-
Right.
-there's no help there, but if we get creative with our scheduling and the staff that we have, then we'll actually be able to provide a better working environment for them.
Sure. I guess one other, I don't want to call it a concern, but I guess it is, in staffing levels, with all, you had mentioned the special events. Are there peak times when maybe we should be adjusted? And I don't want to tell the chief what to do with his scheduling, obviously, but to give officers some relief, so that they're not working, you know, seven days a week, 12-hour shifts constantly for three months straight?
Is that seasonal?
You know, is there ways to take some of that pressure off? I mean, the fire department's in the same boat, and we'll probably get some of that discussion later on, too, but do we look at any short-term staffing adjustments with the amount of personnel we already have?
Through looking at what we do with special events, the issue that we have here in the city is that the special events are a short window of time.
Right.
And if, to be efficient in your staffing, to take that short window of time and say, "We need five, or six, or seven officers for four months, or five months," what do you do with them for the remainder of that timeframe? And the near-term answer is, it's just, it's a lot of hard work during the summertime.
But I think the other, you coached me well on the study. At page two of the executive summary, the last paragraph talks about the sergeant position.
Right.
And I think that does address some of the special event issues, because right now, the special event sergeant is responsible for supervising the crossing guards and community service officers. By relieving that person, the special event sergeant of those duties, that will allow that person to put more resources and more time into-
that person to put more resources and more time into both planning for, as well as in the heat of the summer, it's, it's actively working on those issues. And I think that those are ways, it's shifting and providing relief. Even the civilian officers, or the civilian personnel, for the more senior council members, you remember, when we were doing cuts right after Acts 10 and 32-
Right.
-Chief Grohl was absolutely committed to not reduce sworn officers, so we took it away from, from the civilian. And while that kept the officers on the street, those duties and responsibilities didn't go away. So eventually, the officers started to get some of those duties, and this is recognizing that our officers are extremely valuable on the street, and this will provide, even the civilian work, will provide some relief for the officers on the street.
Absolutely.
And Richard, this is, I mean, this is when, when we talked.
Yeah.
And I think that's critical, because, you know, even, even if you adjust schedules and say, you know, for a month period, we're gonna work 12-hour shifts or something, you know, so that people get their time off when their time off comes. But yeah, I, I agree. I think that sometimes when you cut civilian staff, you think that it doesn't have a trickle down effect to the patrol.
And don't, don't forget that the auxiliaries are in the mix, too.
Correct.
So while they, they can't do everything in a police officer-
No.
-they're immense of help.
Right, right. Especially for traffic control.
Yeah.
So I have a question, then. You mentioned earlier some kind of succession planning type duties being transferred in preparation for promotion and that kind of thing. What about retirements? Does that, does that get factored in to these numbers as well?
Most definitely. And it's because of not having an adequate relief factor now that we recommended the, the police officer position that you added anyway for 2018. So we think you're higher than normal. We think that that's gonna taper off in the next few years, but workload's gonna continue to increase anyway. So yeah, so we, in order to look at the number of police officers needing patrol, we looked at not only the number that you need to fill a shift, but the total relief factor, including position vacancies, which for a department this size, you will always have.
Additionally, the chief, actually, and this applies to both the police and the fire department, the training and preparation necessary to put those individuals on the street and actively performing, the lead time is so incredible-
A year.
-I'm authorizing them to overfill positions. So for a temporary basis, we actually have more than our authorized number of personnel. But knowing fully that both chiefs actively are talking to their employees, finding out how many vacancies are going to occur over the course of the year. And we overfill because we know that within a month or two, we are gonna actually be below full strength. But we, we need to have that so we can get those people on the street as soon as possible. And the training aspect of it, I think Chief Stanley, we've done the same thing in, in fire, because we have to do, we have to do the academy within the, and field training for police.
Right.
And I'll give you information hot off the press. You talk about retirement. Sergeant Stenson, our special events sergeant, is retiring. He'll, he'll be leaving us in the next month and a half. And then I've got another sergeant that's gonna be retiring. So we, we're planning out our retirements so that we can plan for what's occurring in anticipation of vacancies that are gonna be occurring.
I think it's very well done. That's good information, and look forward to reading the whole report.
One of the things that, just for fresh counsel, the council had authorized about $117,000 for the police department for additional personnel. And the council did not commit to those because they wanted to hear the study. So, you know, Chief and I are taking a look at those and considering different options on how we can implement some of these recommendations. And we'll be coming to you with those, with those ideas. But I think the sergeant is absolutely a priority that will provide relief in time for the summer special event season. As Richard mentioned, the, the record supervisor is, is important, just from a internal management issue. And Chief, the, I guess the other ones are kind of your discretion as well. I know, I know those two are kind of the top of the list, but-
They, they really do rise to the top, just to give the relief, as you indicated, for special events. But also, as, as was mentioned, with the, with the cut in administrative staff over the last several years, and the amount of work that were, that was occurring when those cuts were made hasn't diminished. It's, it's actually increased with, with new technology. Technology's really great. It does a lot of wonderful things. But you still have to manage those things. And then as, as we have more activities coming onto the department, the administrative function of the department really needs additional support. So those two are the priorities for me. And then we, we certainly have the need for police officers on the street and the digital evidence technician. As Richard indicated, it's an emerging technology that, over a period of the next several years, that, that's going to grow and grow. We're managing that function now. We're managing with existing staff, but it is an area that we, that we need to address.
So along those lines, is it a practice that when patrol people are maybe on some kind of limitations for medical or other, that they kind of fill in some of those holes right now, or?
Well, it depends on, it depends on what they're, if they're on FMLA leave, it depends on what their limitations are. There are certain things they can't do. And there's frankly, certain things that patrol officers aren't trained to do. The forensic downloads of cellphones, we do over 200 of those a year. They're just not equipped to do those things. It requires specialized training. And the managing of our digital evidence function is, it is evidence. And because of, as, as was mentioned, with our, with our accreditation, the separation of management of that evidence should be separated from operations folks, so that, so that there's, the integrity of the evidence function is still maintained.
And you, I think you're referring to like modified duty or light duty-
Yes.
...or something like that. If somebody's on that kind of status for a couple of months, or even a few months, you've dedicated some training for somebody to be proficient in that, and then you're losing them again. And so you're always training somebody to do that. That plus is evidence. You know, it's really important, and you don't want a large number of people doing it. So the digital evidence technician provides some stability for that.
But on the records technician, or I'm sorry-
Supervisor.
-a supervisor, is that such the case that, that that's specialized training as well?
Well, you have, I think you have to look at a supervisor subordinate relationship. And it's not, it's not a good relationship to have a, a person coming in for two months and gonna supervise this group. When it relates to the human, the human resources side of managing and, and leading those folks, it just becomes, there's no continuity there. And we, we have all kinds of different things that start to occur, and for us to, to give the, to give our, our staff the leadership that they need, they need to have some continuity of who their supervisors are.
All right. If there are no further-
I think our follow-up will be providing you with an initial implementation plan, utilizing the resources that council's already provided in the budget. And I think the idea was always about, we would be implementing this a little later in the year, because number one, recruitment, just the practical side of it, but also, how, how far can we stretch those dollars? How many of these positions can we get in? I think the assumption was maybe two. We may take a look at options for, can we get any more of these in there? And then, of course, you know, and so that's the operational side of me talking to you. And Trina is always in my shadow, just listening to what I'm saying. The financial impact is, any increase we do is gonna have an impact on 2020 budget. So it's, we can, we can make anything. We could, we could fill 12 positions for one month, and I could be okay on the budget. But the impact the following year is gonna hit you immediately. So we have to be careful about doing that in a very measured fashion, so that we are fiscally responsible for, not this year, because we'll be okay this year. It's the four, it's the following year that we have to think about. And that's what Chief and I will be looking at.
And the, and the second part of that is that we also want to program in whatever we're, whatever we're not gonna, gonna accomplish in this year, how do we get there in the, in the coming years? The recommendation is adding two more officers in the next five years, technically the next three years, from when the data was drawn. So how do we get there? And, and lay out a plan, hopefully, on, on how we, how we staff those additional positions that, that were recommended.
One question. Do you foresee any difficulties in the future recruiting qualified candidates?
That is a, that is a challenge for law enforcement agencies across the country. We, we here in Oshkosh are very fortunate in that we have a very, we have a very good recruiting program. We have our CSO program, which is designed specifically for those students who are going to a university, whether it be UWO, whether it be Lawrence, whether it be Fox Valley Tech, and they're in a criminal justice program. We bring them in, and we try, we try them out, they try us out. They get engaged in our, in our agency, and they invest in the police department. We invest in them. Most of my hires come from my CSO program, but we are still challenged with, with finding qualified candidates. Generally, across the country, it's, it takes about 100 applicants to find one good candidate. And, and it's, it's incredible, it's an incredible environment to try to recruit in, because of all the requirements to become a police officer, and, and really what our community expects of their police officers, as it relates to their background, their integrity, the work ethic that they're gonna put to the job. We want the best that we can provide to you. And many folks along the way, they, they, they disqualify themselves because of things that have occurred in their life.
Thank you.
Mark, with planning, looking at some of the housing programs and some of the incentive things that we talked about in terms of public safety.
You may recall during our discussion about housing that certainly we want to encourage public safety, but anybody making a good wage is, would be absolutely important. So it's more than, it's more than just doing it for public safety officers. It's doing it for, for anybody who, including Oshkosh Corporation employees or Bemis employees. So the idea was trying to get them eligible, and there's always that window of qualifying. You have to make enough, but not too much, because if you make too much, then you're not qualified. So it's wrestling with those issues. But I think it's going beyond just public safety, but certainly encouraging public safety to be, to be part of that.
For the recruiting purposes, the additional incentive, I think, is what we've talked about.
Yeah, not-
In addition to the other areas.
I guess it's not specializing it just for them, but making them aware of, of those of the programs. And that's, you know, we were talking about the Lacrosse Promise program, and, you know, following through on that, and how we can apply something like that perhaps to our community. I think that will involve more than just public safety, but certainly we can target public safety and so we encourage public safety personnel to apply. Chief, Promise 543. I'm just, I'm just looking at the clock.
If there are no other further questions, Chief, thank you.
Richard.
Thank you very much.
Turn to the other room in the meeting.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and-